You can't say Martha, she's not playing for the flag to it. Probably okay. I don't want anything they keep protesting or anything. I'm not gonna be able to stand on that site. I'm gonna go to the place.
Oh, yes, sir.
Oh, I heard it.
Uh huh, she did, she did. I didn't really know.
Okay, let me get my check back here. Go call.
Um Alderman, I have your Alderman's agenda.
You have to.
Alderman Cathy Burton.
Yeah.
Alderman Brandon Thompson.
Yes.
Approval of the.
Make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion made in favor on the paper.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion for the consent agenda.
Make a motion for the consent, approval of the consent agenda. Second.
Motion made in favor on the paper.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We was gonna have Charlie Wade, but we don't right now, maybe next month. But he more than likely won't be at the record meeting. He'll be at the full session, so we'll be talking about contractors and everything. He improved his health, but he really improved it. Um but he just wasn't able to get a driver or nothing, that he can't drive. And he come from Raleigh. So he said he'd be there next week, next month or something. We talked over, I told him he'd be fine. Discussing about the park. Like I said, I wanted to have one complaint by block with the park not being open. And it wasn't really a complaint, he just wanted to know why it was locked. And I explained it to him. And he, him and his two kids took their bikes down there. When they come back, they drop their bags, put needles and part and stuff on the park. But and it's locked. Now you know what it is, went open. He said, well, he said, I see one part closed. And there wasn't no need to save it, throw it trash, cuz. It's just needles and everything else. So I don't know, I think we need to either form a group or get a couple or do something. And see about maybe and working maybe with the chamber and see if they have some. Maybe we can get some of that ground until we've got that, it's big enough. Ground to put one pavilion and the thing, then then they'll open it, people painting on. And close that down. We own it, here you got the papers right there, you'll be able to read that from us. We own that ground. And we donate, I'm sure, I'm not a hundred percent sure. It mentions a chamber and there's some word and the thing down there. And it mentions the Barrow family. I have not read all that, I'm near that deck, well, I'm sure all of it. But you might, in your time, right now, because you might know.
We had a time.
They're not saying.
I might, I don't know.
But I'm. I guess maybe it's both kind of the whole can work on, whatever we wanna do, but. I think that all, to all the board thinks that we should do something different than what we got. And I think most people in town would like to have a park. But we need one that's visible. And you know what's going on there and that. And most people are doing something wrong, don't do it out in the open. But when it's polluted like that, they do, we totally can't help it. And the chamber, if it's going down, they get as good to this city as what we like going. But they put all the money in that park that they wanna put in, just to get tore back up. They don't wanna put no more money in. I had went to them and they would have gave me the money to redo the bathroom. But I think it would be too much if they'd be pulled back up. And it was also a thousand dollars to redo the bathroom.
Just the way she lives.
So I'd rather put it in something. So I don't know. We'll talk with the Johnson, he can be around and. We all get there, maybe one of it, somebody can get with either Jokers you have to deal with now. Or Scott, everybody, right? Brown.
Um I'm guessing. You know, the jogger stadium.
Yes, Scott, uh he owns the antique mall property.
Yeah.
The company.
That company, it was Joe Scott, but now then he dead, I think. Y'all, there's some people calling him Jokers or whatever you wanna call, but they're both same.
They. Scott.
He's the one that told you that that wasn't his priority.
Well, the antique mall, it's like they don't care much about it. No, they, they don't, no, they don't care much, they don't care about it. Ninety-nine percent don't care about it and and it's just they're existing in a slab and probably this is that.
They wanted fifty thousand dollars for it, I know what you did. I don't know, I don't have a plan, I don't remember that.
Seven acres or seven acres, I think.
I bet. I think the park is nine point two or nine point seven. We don't want the whole thing.
We don't need, we don't need a ball field, we don't need the basketball.
Them days are off, you see what I'm saying?
We just need the swing and the. Looks like the Lions take ladies and.
You see what, you see what turn did, their ball field, there ain't no league no more, there ain't nobody does that.
It was great back in the day.
If they're difficult, they don't do it no more.
Not anymore, yeah.
Put the race track.
So do we want to pursue?
Put the race track.
Do we want to pursue looking into this?
Maybe by next month we'll have something together and we'll talk, I'll get with Doc and talk to him. I mean, he knows a few ropes and things, I don't know. Sometime he goes on extreme, I don't, but he's a good guy to start something.
I'm sure, I'm sure that the Scott.
Anybody, I mean, they all can work on it.
Yeah, yeah.
If you guys have any ideas and you wanna talk to somebody, talk to your people. They're just as forward to it, we're trying to find that, aren't we? I don't think that we would need more than a couple acres. Because it's not gonna be no fault to him, he can be on there at court. Or it's gonna be a place where people throw that's a kid, you know, on a bicycle path or something, or walking around it. You know, he get one of them, go around the old two acres. There's a few streets open, man, like that. But before them, they got tore up. You pick up a day and then a couple nights, they be, they be tore up.
Well, like you said, because they're in secluded areas, this might be a little more open.
But we're a farmer committee of some sort to do something. I got three women and one man, so I imagine it'd be a woman committee. And so. And she can do a lot of. But they not give up any idea, I wanna make some phone calls and see what's available, whatever, feel free to do so. Just tell them you're inquiring and stuff. And we, nobody has authority to make any decisions or anything. We're gonna report back or find issues, board if we can find out anything.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
I'll get with the chamber, see what they'll do. We ain't had a meeting in a year or so. I got a meeting set up with them. Unless somebody got something else, but move on. Okay, departmental reports, emergency management.
Nothing to report.
You want something very detailed? Okay. Police department.
Uh, just a few things, made some notes. I've switched over to a night shift up in St. Louis, so I'll be here a lot more often. Been working days and everything else. I do have a subpoena to appear on a traffic ticket on September twentieth, so I'll be there for that. City ordinance, as we talked about, stuff on Spruce Street that we've been dealing with for over a year. I'm still waiting to hear back from Mr. Brower's office, macro conception we talked about, and Ninth Street. Let's see here, twenty twenty-four court meetings have been announced and I forward those to. Dr. Duda and Miss Fredstef and the mayor. The email communication has been a lot better, which is, which I always appreciate on both ends, it is online. Uh, there's a report, an update to the report writing software tomorrow morning at eleven. And I don't know if you heard the news, it hasn't affected any personal information, but the law enforcement. System was hacked, cyber hacked statewide the last two days and it just came back up today. Uh, so that was, uh, that was interesting, people kinda had a get out of jail free card, cuz you couldn't run anybody and. And so that was fun. Otherwise, I'll be here tomorrow, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, with the court appearance as well on Wednesday. And still working the city ordinance, as I go working with Nathan Joker's, Scott properties, to finally get the antique mall property taken care of. But as, as he mentioned, they, they've. And as we talked about it, it's like we, they pretty much washed their hands of that property, so hopefully we can.
We could come around and.
Find something else to.
Dick it right now, because it always there, because they didn't do a very good job.
Yeah, just did a very good one, I understand, so.
They did two crews down there and they could have got the guy that used to do it or whatever, what's his name, and he could have done it right. They don't. What about the bridge?
That's over on Spruce Street, third and his street.
No, that's.
Cedar.
Cedar, Cedar Street, yeah. I got Cedar, more on trigger, Cedar Street, I got my trees, that's what I was talking to Mr. Brower's office about.
I don't, I'm kidding, but I want them to get what the judge done there, I want these cars hold on. Anything that ain't registered. We were gonna do that in stupid.
Yeah.
And anything that's in their name or legal, we can legally move them. If they take them up there, put them in storage, they can do what they want to. Because we, we don't, we're giving them more rest there to know. When we can get it set up and we done, and they can be a hooker to them, they can do what they want. But them and anybody else that got a damn car that's not registered, and then our dealer's license. That one down here on Fourth Street, he's building up again. He, he needs junk and everything else, they gotta go.
Yep.
If he wants to keep that junk, build a rock.
Yep, okay. And while I know all the, all the vehicles over there, the old Blue Trump, the Town Country, the Al Camino. I saw, I think that's all insured to the sun, but it lives in, that last idea was with Imperial. And there's now, there's a new one down here on Third Street, looks like a Jeep got rolled and they got it out in front of their house.
I know, I'm saying that one, wouldn't they kill that?
Yeah, and the.
It was called the guy, I mean, I know where he's headed.
Plus, I.
So it cannot be on buyout property, nothing can be on buyout property like that. You can buy the car there, the driveway, we live in, there's nothing. But junk cars, they're left cars, it cannot be left. Period, I mean, but we won't send them, let them explain it to them.
Sure, yeah, and I just always sit there, first time I heard about it today, I said, oh, that, that's a roll.
They happen right out there. But I'm sorry, all of them.
Oh, yeah.
I, I seriously doubt if they be three cars left though where they can leak past our ordinance. And our ordinance is real good, if it ain't registered, it ain't ours, or it ain't there.
On Cedar.
Been there over thirty days.
Okay, exactly, it's been over a year, so, so I will.
That one truck's been there for four years.
Yeah, I'll, I'll yank it out of there tomorrow, later tomorrow.
If the judge again with no case.
Yeah, I'll.
Y'all understand it's okay, because we got an ordinance there.
I'll call Mr. Brower's office tomorrow morning to make sure, and he says, yeah, well.
We wanna move on.
Then, then we'll do it.
I'm sure that guy door was, had the door, door speeds and that door on. Some of them are part of the people we buy that fix up.
And while I sit there for observance, I was able to come back for that, the thing, the Wisconsin. The van that got dropped off here from Wisconsin with the tornado is, we got that out of there, so. So, yeah, so I'll do that tomorrow and get the ball rolling. Or get the ball to the bottom of the hill and finish. And.
One more thing, we're gonna move on. These people that moved in these houses and they're mowing street to street. If, now there's some places that can't be done, never was done. But any house that used to be, it's gonna go back to being mowed from curb to curb.
Good.
They're not doing it. Uh, the one that put the trailer in up here, he dug the dirt out, they do it themselves, so. He guess he don't have to take care of rest of the hill, he does, he does that, all of them. And every street's down Third Street and, I mean, Third and sixty-one, used to be open sixty-one to Third Street. Every house from the corner down here to the man's house.
Yep.
Now they have not heard of any of them open top to bottom. So I really dug the man's house, been there today, they got a new mower, they're doing the mow yourself. They're not mowing side of Ellen Street at all. So they need to be, I don't know, within a little bit. Well, you can also talk to them if you want to, because they're coming. I wanna give everybody one chance and then we're gonna talk about the dick it. We have to, will contract got doing it and then be put on. This damn place is growing up, if it used to be mowed, now they are. That one there behind, what's his name, they used to mow that, but it's called road, it's a tree and thing, it's impossible to mow now. But what's his name, we just talked about, my friend, that used to be open top to bottom. Whenever, whenever, Joey, I mean.
Talk about Barry Cluck?
No, uh, right here by, I don't hear yours live.
No, Gerardo?
Gerardo, that used to be open top to bottom.
Back whenever.
Whenever, I can't remember his name.
Pizza Ray.
Pizza Ray. Hey. And but I, but he don't aim over the top. But he done had to start mowing around his house, I mean, it's all broken, everybody, I'm gonna do it. If they ever go, give them a ticket.
Yeah.
And if they, ain't never been a problem, we'll find out what the problem is, maybe we can help them with it. Something gone wrong. She got a problem right now, maybe they can't mow it, maybe it's a problem. But some of these guys at the bottom, they just don't do it.
Right.
This place, uh, up here on top or wherever, next to the engine there, they don't move it, this is the thing. That's the issue. I ordered mine, or I did, I folded one that I can move. And I paid the labor, get done, we get them, I just forward them, but.
Yeah, I'll take care of the macro conception one, and still try to find the Ninth Street guy.
Where's Ninth Street at?
Uh.
Where's Ninth Street?
Or not Ninth Street.
He's lying.
The other, uh.
Oh, the guy on Ninth Street, oh, man. It's right behind my work, you're there.
Uh, the Seventh Street and Seventh Ninth Street, but the, yeah, so. This week, this, the rest of this week will be ordinance stuff and write, write an act of conception and try to find that guy and. And also follow with the cars on Spruce.
Oh, yeah, if, if we get the case from the law.
Cedar.
We'll get what the toll company and see if they wanna do it. Show them what we got here, because they have to put them in town. And the, we'll tow them.
They won't say, they won't say anything long before they get the cop back or the loom still, yeah.
But, uh.
I get it.
Then, uh, I'm trying, law enforcement, probably has to be available most of the time when there's these big dogs. Had to be down here, the county has to come around. If you're not available, but they will have to be some law enforcement there, because they're gonna get mildly.
Right, I mean, I mean, because I call them, they'll come out and pull them all out, yeah, so. Absolutely.
But I went legal, went in this legal, now ordinance makes a legal. And so we're gonna clean this town up just a little bit. They were cleaning up and maybe some more want to buy that ground up there and put some nice houses up there or nice duplex or something. Set up a hundred dollar rent that's people to take care of the place. So I just wanted, it's all them, ain't no secret, some, some of this stuff we had to talk about a closed session. But right now, I want everybody to know what's gonna happen.
They don't have.
They know who I live, if they wanna talk to me, they'll walk. But most people don't come back to say a time, like that, they.
Right.
Because they get no sympathy from me. I had to move my dress, now I'm over my hair, probably back in there. Now I'm over mine every week. I've moved it every week since I've been sick.
I heard you.
So there ain't no reason why I'm telling them, working ain't no excuse.
It's good exercise, it's all.
Most people on work, they hard today. So, so wait, anybody, nobody got anything to say more on what was left, or still anything else?
No, certainly, good.
You got anything, anybody got anything yet? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Fire department.
Thank you, guys.
No boy.
I mean, we had eight calls this past month, figuring out five medical. One church down the road, one LZ, waiting zone for a patient. One mutual aid call was sent again. Um, I have three firemen right now, one three first responder course, it's a six month course. Um, they just started last Thursday. Uh, the analyst district took the, uh, put it on for all of our departments, so we can get more first responders certified. So that way we got more people around when it comes to medical vehicle accidents, anything like that. Because EMS is, sometimes they might be sending house three to us and they, you never know. So it's good to have somebody that's got medical background. Um, turn around and right now I'm going through school, getting ready to go to school for a pair of minutes. Um, turn around, I passed my EMT, so now I'm going through parent's school. Most of it's all online now, which is kinda nice, just gotta do, do the practicals, that's how it works, pretty nice. The other thing is too, is right now, this is for you, Corbin.
Yes, sir.
Anyways, I'm, uh, I had three fires, that is prohibited to have in town, wire burning, trash. The addresses are nine sixty-six Third Street, nine eighty-four Third Street and eight oh four Fourth Street.
Nine sixty-six Third.
Anyways, I did give them a warning out of my mouth and it still happens, so. I think that a right incitization is a lot better than me.
Nine sixty-six Third, what were the others, I'm sorry?
Uh, nine eighty-four and eight oh four Fourth Street. Turn around, we're burning treated wood, wire, I mean, when I'm sitting up at my house and I see black smoke going on. I was thinking we got a house fire and it's actually trash and debris burned, so.
And dark green, white and water, that's not pretty.
It's, uh, it needs to be taken care of and.
Eight oh four, what was it, sorry?
Eight oh four Fourth Street.
Fourth. So she's been moral.
And the other thing is, I did get a complaint by a couple of residents. They seen me do some work down on Seventh Street and asked me why Tri-County is not mowing the curb down there. Where they got the farm equipment, that's always been mowed, it's taken care of and it needs to be addressed down there. Because I can understand Mr. Madison coming around the curb and the FedEx truck was coming around the other day and they about to light it, so. He was.
We ain't gonna fix one of them, that equipment can be hauled off too, you know, so. Uh, if he can't take care of it, we're gonna clean it up and I have to move it.
Anybody, it's been taken after years.
I would move down a residential place there and, and then we weren't really aware of what was going on there. I know they never mowed the place very good, but they never let anything get like that. That's never been done since they put that equipment down. It's higher than the equipment. But you can talk to them too, we're gonna send them a lot. I'm gonna send these letters out, get the half paper work on.
You know, we're talking about them, some passes.
Yeah.
Who bought?
That's.
Anybody know?
Some guy bought it, I know he's fixing it up right now. I know, I think he's supposed to come down and pay the deposit, have the water turned on, so he can do some drywall work and stuff in there. But, you know, I know we just got a new power pole today stuck in down there for, to put the weather head onto the house and stuff. So I know he's, it looks like he's fixing it up, so I don't know, so.
Anything else on that?
Yeah, that's it, we're fire cops, right?
Street department. I don't know anything right now, I didn't talk together. I mean, I know, and two of them, we're supposed to do some, that's all, we got so much problem with the sewer right now, there's no help. I ain't got time to do street, but we, we can still fill up the low spot with gravel, whatever, till we get to home and do something better. We got a whole lot of stuff going on right now. But they're all passable. We, and that road round a little bit, yeah. I see he finally sickle more Fourth Street. At the bottom. That was like no real bad, so he did, he did do that. I see he goes to sickle more too. I ain't wanna have to call and load it and sickle it, stick it out by there.
I just broke, I saw that, it just. Broken that, like one broke, heartbroken to the teeth, first of all, to be, I guess, it wasn't digging, it just.
Next, you got something else on the street, you got anything to teach them, I wanna say?
Uh, not entirely, I haven't, I ain't on the street side.
Water, work water.
Well, anyways, I'm, uh, we went from one stream back to another stream, so, uh, the water, the water's been doing great. Everything's been pumping fine, not one wood, haven't seen nothing outrageous happening. Uh, one of the water readings, uh, the new can pumps actually working really good, it's been staying. I mean, it's a lot better pump than what we had, test been coming about good. We did have a high UCI, but we found out where that was, some grandkids left the water that was on, when it was real hot and, uh, yeah, they had a pretty good side of water though, so.
It's a lot of wild, so.
Yeah, so, uh, the other thing, pure side, we got some chemical problems going on. We won't talk more about that in closed session on that part. And then grinders, I got line grinders that I've been called out to, had to replace contactors and three of them. And started really kits, and then I got two of them down right now, have to pump down the best I can. Turn around and tell we get, hopefully the mowers in or whatever. I know everything's been on back order, a lot of stuff, so. Um, but that's all I have on the report, that's enough.
This is a potential invasion, huh?
What's that park?
Oh, park, I could check it out, I can get it checked out.
Yeah, we already had it, we already had it there.
We talked about most of it, but you got anything else you wanna add?
No, I don't have anything else to add.
And I let it down on the dog park, but David was Mike to you people, David to me. But I will get with it next week and we'll try to get something moving on. People with the dogs that run loose and, I gotta understand, we got a lease law. And I, I know they don't like it, if you don't like it for me, put a fence around it, and not like that one down there. I mean, a real fence. Put a fence around, let them run the fence, but if you get them out in the street, I don't care if they walk at your hill, they're supposed to be on the leash.
Be controlled, yeah.
And. He gonna be here a day.
I saw him weeks ago and I got him having enough problems.
But I will try to get hold of David tomorrow, maybe tell him, meet him with him next week. I might call and tell him he can buy my dinner.
There you go.
He won't. Okay? Anything else, anything on the park down there? Because we are going to get a committee, going and do some work trying to clean this different parts.
I do have one thing on Saturday, Carl.
Huh?
Maybe one day whenever we get enough time between me and Dennis. Take the dump truck up and start hauling that dirt down to the basement area or something to get it out of there, because that looks like, I mean, we'll fix it.
We say, I can get him and David to do it, can't they?
Yeah, because I mean, we turned around a number, we cleaned all of that once, so make everything look good and it's starting to get. I could.
Now, if we had that, if you can't do it with it, David, David, they just try to repair and get up, pick up all the birds and stuff and. We, you know, try to maybe scoop up some of that dirt and put it down there, clothe it.
Yeah, I mean, it's good, I mean, we can leave a small pile up there for them, the gardeners gonna cover it pretty well.
Well, the people want to live with the bay, but. Well, the people want to live with the bed, but we don't need all that up there.
No, no.
When we need a load, of, of, for, have, we're, they're the old, some of them are down with tanks, they have some down. Okay, I get with you on that, and I get with that, he's working the water, for, I know. He'll take his doggy to the. Doctor hospital or something, take a clinic or something, that. She tried to be a farmer, and the cow was taller than her. Put her into eight. Okay, if nothing else, the motion to adjourn now.
I make a motion to adjourn, this been, I said I made a motion.
I got a motion in a second, now on paper?
Aye.
Oppose? This meeting will be adjourned.